Hi folks. Good evening. I'm really glad that you're here tonight. I think every church goes through particular stages where God encourages us to go to a different place. I think it's been reading a book by Scott Peresinski called The Sky Below. And he's an astronaut, but he's also a mountain climber. And he talks about trying to acclimate yourselves to a different place on the mountain, especially Mount Everest. You start at a place where you can become acclimatized to high altitude and the like. And I think that we are acclimatizing ourselves now to a brand-new place. And so this is a particularly important and historic night in the life of the church. I don't think, I've been looking back through the history of the church, and I don't think I've seen anything as important since 1935. So this is an amazing place to be tonight. Would you pray with me tonight? Father, we bless your holy name, and we thank you, just as good shepherds do, of moving the sheep from plateau to plateau. The grass is greener, the water is more plentiful, and the view is absolutely incredible. So Father, we are transitioning to a different place in the life of our church. And we pray that as we consider an investment in your kingdom, we pray tonight that all that we would say and all that we would do would truly be an act of worship. And all God's children, young and old, say, "Amen." Once again, I'm glad you're here tonight. We're here for the purpose of maybe looking at a brand-new journey. A journey that will take us to places we may not have expected. We have, and I say "we," we've got a lot of folks that have been involved in this process. And we originally wanted to do this about a month and a half ago, but just due to some circumstances and the schedule of our busy summer, tonight is the night to do that. And I think this is an important night to do it. We have a Capitol Campaign Committee, as well as a dedicated group of trustees and the Church Council that have been involved in this along the way. We are partnering with ministry partners out of Birmingham, and you'll hear a little bit more about what they do in a little bit. I'm pleased to present Barry Mathis, who is here. He's the architect of the drawings that you'll see, and he'll present to us some of the proposed changes. One of the things as we go through this presentation tonight, I respectfully request that you hold your questions until the end. There's a very good chance that your question will be answered during the presentation that will follow. Is that some sort of a scram alarm there? Okay, okay. All right, my beloved, let's begin tonight. Henry Ford said once that whether you want or desire to do a thing and believe that you can do it, or whether you attempt a thing and believe that you can't do it, you're right. So it's all in our attitude. It's all in the way that we disposition and discipline ourselves about how we approach what we will see before us tonight. All right. Our church has a very illustrative and beautiful history. Bill Dupree presented a couple of weeks ago, well, how long has it been now, Bill? I guess it's been a couple of months at least, that he presented the fact that America's First United Methodist Church is the home church for the South Georgia Annual Conference. So this is the birthplace for our South Georgia Conference. It is also the place where the great Methodist theologian Albert Outler lived in the 1920s. His father was a pastor here. And he, Albert Outler, went on to Drew University and is world-renowned in Methodism. And his teaching there, he took the teachings of Wesley and read all of his sermons, analyzed his life, and came up with something that we know very well as the Wesleyan quadrilateral. And he was in this church. It started off in an acre of land. Somebody bought for $30. Can you imagine what you can do with an acre of land that costs $30 these days? We've seen the church grow, and it became a circuit-rider place. And people from all over this area of the state would come to this little plot of land. And a church was there and later turned, torn down. This plot of land became the home for the beginning of a church that looks remarkably like this one. And was formed and grew. And as you know, this church itself has not changed that much in 100 years, despite a fire that would occur right around the time of the Great Depression. The fire devastated the entire church, and it cost $45,000 to rebuild. $30,000 of that money came within a period of six weeks. Can you imagine that? Six weeks and $30,000 were raised during the Great Depression. How much would that be these days? I don't know. But I know it's a lot more than $45,000. You've seen the church grow, haven't you? You've seen the City of Americas grow. I understand, and I have heard it, flying in this end of the state, that there are two markers for where you are in relationship to the airport. One is the Windsor Hotel. The second, of course, is America's First United Methodist Church, turned right at the dome. It is part of the instrument approach plates for this area. Pretty amazing. I hear more comments about this church that adopts the shining city upon the hill. You've heard that before, the city motto. But a couple of years ago, we decided to put lights up that illuminate the dome. And believe it or not, that helps a lot of air travelers, as well as folks that want to get to the City of Americas. 1962, we bought land, or from the acquired land that we had received. And there was a great pastor that was here that was laid to rest here just a couple of days ago. And the education building was placed there. We've incrementally increased our land holdings because we are technically a landlocked church. And my beloved, we acquired a number of properties here. One was taken down just recently. And now we have an area right next to us that can possibly be used in the future outside of the scope of what we'll present today. So I know that you're all part of the history. You're all part of this great thing. I talked yesterday about the sheaves of wheat that make the arches of the dome, the four pillars that hold up the dome that remind us of creation, the stained glass that reminds us of the folks that are now brilliant in heaven's gates. So tonight, let's remember our history, because now we are part of it. And now we're going to go on to a different place. And maybe 100 years from now, they will write of us. Remember when the folks in America's First United Methodist Church, our brothers and sisters, our great-grandfathers and grandmothers, decided to take a risk and do something new? As I've said to you many times before, my beloved, the church is not this building. It's y'all. It's everyone seated here today. We stand on the shoulders boldly of folks that have gone on ahead of us. But ministry still continues on an amazing way. As you see Stop Hunger now at the top with those beautiful head coverings. I don't need one, but they do. We see the quilters group in the lower left-hand corner. We see the blessing of the book bags. And we see an expectant young man over at Bright Beginnings looking up with excitement as he contemplates what's going to happen on Water Day just a couple of days away. So ministry is what we're all about. Ministry is how we take the gospel message and apply it through heart, excuse me, head to heart to hands in a way that brings honor and glory to God and lets people know that the Kingdom of God is here and soon to come. And it is a marvelous thing. However, there are a couple of challenges that we have, and we're going to try to address those tonight. We have, as you look at this slide and the charts that you have before you or the slides that you have before you, you can see some of the things that we really need to work on. And that's the purpose tonight, is to only do the essential things that we believe can bring honor and glory to God, to bring up the education building and other places up to code and the like. And you can see there, we've got the outside canopy in the colonnade. We have the reverse part of the sanctuary and the port cochere and some areas in Bright Beginnings that we really truly need to address as well. As you can see, there is some work to do in our Bright Beginnings area on the second floor. And one of the things I'm going to encourage you to do after the completion of this presentation, we would really like for you to take a little trip and go up into these areas that we'll talk about tonight, go down into the foundry, look at Bright Beginnings and its condition, and then go to the second floor and then begin to look at what is going on there. And see if you don't agree that the work that we need is definitely before us. You can see down on the foundry, of course, there are some, we have some pernicious drainage issues, and it's not up to par. And we want that youth space to be something that would bring honor and glory to God, as well as being a space that our youth can be proud of and we as a church as well. So... I remember it was a conversation I had just a little while ago with Bill, and we were talking about 1962. Bill said that he became a member of America's First back in 1884. So you know the rich and illustrative history that we've had. But in particular, when you move back in 1962, you're looking at the beginning structure of the education building. And I think I've got this story correct. Is that you asked one of the folks that were there, and you asked them the question, "Why are you doing this?" And he basically said, "We're doing it for you and your family." And I think that's our approach, is as you look at the kids there, those toddlers, they have no idea what we're doing right now. The infants that are in our nursery, they don't know the plans that we have for the church or what God has in store for us. We don't know what the children that are not yet born, but will experience America's First are in for. But one of the things that we can do is make an investment in their future. We can make an investment that will be a place where they can go to a different plane, a different plateau, that they can look back and say, "Thank you for all that you have done, all that we have done," just as Bill and his family and the many families that were involved in the building of the education wing can say, "Thank you for what you've done now in 2017." Okay. This is an overall area of the campus itself. We were trying to figure out today about the total value of the campus. And there's a number, I guess Barry was thrown out there. If you were to replace this building, it is a priceless building, I think. And I think we've come up with a number of, maybe for the whole campus, maybe just for this place where we sit today at around $15 million. And that's a lot. Maybe Bill can write a check or some one of you can, but I can't. And it is a building that is just irreplaceable. So that is part of the overall campus view. You can see in the top part of that, of the slide there that's included, that is part of the building that was taken down in that flat area back there. The playground communicates with that and for some use later in the future. So once again, that is moving toward the future. So what I'd like to talk to you about is that's the view, my beloved, for the first floor. And I'd like to introduce to you Barry, and he's going to go through some of these slides. I know this looks like an eye chart. And in your black-and-white drawings, he's going to try to show you where the existing walls are and where there's modifications. My friends, this is Barry.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Is the mic on? You can hear? I'm Barry Mathis. I'm president of Mathis Design Group. But don't be overly impressed, because I'm also the janitor. So we, I'm very honored to have been asked to participate in this process with design and bringing some spaces up to date and reimagining some spaces. It's a very important period in the life of your church. It's also one of the most impressive structures, not just in Americas, but it's just an unbelievably impressive structure architecturally, detail-wise. The replacement value here with the dome and the structure itself, the exterior facade with the Corinthian columns, the cut stone, the stained glass, it would be almost impossible to replace it. So you're very, very fortunate to have the opportunity to congregate here on Sundays and at other times. And what we're talking about this evening is the opportunity to maximize those other times when you can utilize the space and to attract people into the space who may not have been here before and the opportunity for civic outreach to both the church and the unchurched. So what I will start with here is, if you can see on this slide, the blue walls are the walls that are extant or existing, and they'll be remaining in place. Carson had brought up a point earlier. We are going to retain all of the existing exterior windows. We're not going to replace those. So that's going to save us a tremendous amount of labor and cost in the overall project. The brown or gold-colored walls are walls here that are going to be modified. Demolition is going to occur in some of these areas. And then we're going to build new structure and new walls in some of these. So the place that we're sitting now is off the slide here in the main sanctuary. And then these are the two-story appendages to the rear that were built, I think, in about 1925. Is that correct, Jerry? So what we're looking at here is the overall space with the Bright Beginnings, children's classroom spaces, the new infant spaces, flex room, and the coffee café areas. This is the main hall just behind the sanctuary where we are now. We can move on to the next one. What we're doing here is zooming into this north wing, which is this wing here, and the Bright Beginnings classroom spaces. We're going to build a new wall across one. These are two very long rooms as we speak now, a lot of square footage here. In order to bring these spaces up to code, the state-certified program Bright Beginnings requires certain aspects. So we have to have exhaust, diaper-changing areas, sinks. We have to have a certain number of cubbyhole storage spaces for book bags and children's things. You can see some of those ancillary cubbyhole spaces and lockers out in the big hall area here. And then we have, this is the, some people call it the moat, the area between the two wings is that space there. We can move on to the next one. This is a focus on the southern annex wing here that is the new infant space. This will become the new Bright Beginnings office. It's just behind what's currently the infant space. And that's going to become a new flex room and the new Wesley space. So we're going to have a teacher's lounge here, which they don't currently have, and a nice little break area, a teacher's restroom that's accessible both from the rear classrooms and through these areas. And then we're going to reconfigure lots of storage and shelving, which they desperately need here. This is the handicap-accessible restroom, which opens off of the new Wesley flex room. Okay? Move on. Now, this is going to be the new elevator. This is a pretty hot-button issue here. Again, for code and accessibility issues, we desperately need to include this in this process. This is a nice three-stop commercial-grade hydraulic elevator. So it has high weight capacity, high volume. You can fit four or five people in there very comfortably, possibly six or seven, depending on the size of the individual. So what we're doing here is we have the opportunity to have two accessible spaces for the elevator doors, some steel structure here directly across from this coffee café area and opens into this sanctuary space just behind us here. We can move on. This is the coffee café. Now, what these have become in liturgical projects all over the state and all over the country, this is the latest thing that is, it's a wonderful opportunity to invite people to congregate in a certain area in the space and a meeting place before and after services. You obviously have more than one service. This, logistically, geographically, within the floor plan of the church, is the perfect spot to have this with this corner area. This is what's now the Bright Beginnings office space. And then behind it, we have a full-service little kitchen pantry storage area. And what's now the infant room is converted into a flex Wesley and parlor space. So what this does is it brings the weddings and those types of things, and funerals and those types of events into the sanctuary, which is much more convenient logistically for the brides and the grooms and those type of people. And with the coffee café, this is a warm, inviting hospitality outreach space. And it affords you the opportunity to reach out for your civic ministries into the community of both the church and the unchurched and invite people to come in and use this space. This is going to be a really popular area in the church. It's about 4.2% of the overall budget as we look at it. It's a very small expenditure, relatively speaking, for the impact that it has. This, I think that you'll find that this is really going to resonate. The church up the road, 30 miles up the road, Cordial Methodist, has this coffee café. I just found out that they do indeed have one there. And it really is exciting. It's an opportunity for people to have a sense of space, a sense of place within the physical building of the church. So I'm really excited about the opportunity for you guys to do this. And again, here we have the Bright Beginnings office space. This was the handicap-accessible restroom that's off of this and can also serve for weddings, for a bride's changing area. And then when you have funerals and other events where there are catered and food and service is required, you have access to these, this kitchen area behind. So it's accessible directly from the coffee café space. Out in the wide hall there, the buggies that are out there now, the certification of the state won't allow us to have this. So they're going to be moved elsewhere. And we'll get to a slide in a little bit that demonstrates what we're going to do with those. But that opens up the accessibility through that wide hall. And we'll have these little coffee café tables. And we'll see a slide in a little bit with some renderings for that. Okay? This is the upstairs, the second-floor spaces. As you come up the stairs here, again, the elevator is here. This is going to be the new choir practice area with counter space and storage and lockers. This new hall that we create by building this particular wall will have lots of opportunity for the coral robes and lockers there. The worship director's new office space here. You have your existing Christmas storage area here. And then we have the coral choir archives and storage space for the music archives here. This is the new Sheffield Wooton space, again, with some lockers and countertop and closet space here, storage areas. And then as we come to the other side of the hall, we're going to renovate these restrooms here, the men's and women's restrooms, which desperately need some attention. And then on this side, we'll have another, the next slide is going to show what we're going to do on this area for the young adults. I think this is the blow-up of the choir practice area, the choir archival storage, the worship director's office, and the elevator. We have some HVAC. And then, of course, the attic. There's, if anybody's ever been up on the roof, we have to maintain this access to that, through the stairs there. And we can go on to the next one, Jerry. Here's the new young adult space. These are new walls that we're going to construct here. So when you come to the top of the stairs, the young adults will be able to come in and have access to this large classroom here and here. We have overflow worship space with Sunday School areas, Sunday School areas, and then another big Sunday School space here. And here's the restrooms that we're going to renovate. Okay? This is the rendering for the coffee café. Again, what we're noticing here is we want to bring people together. We want a space that's very hospitality-oriented for greeting newcomers and gives us this sense of place within the physical building of the church. This is what's now that office for the Bright Beginning space. So we're going to have pastries and refreshments and drinks and things available here, the coffee, the signage, new lights, new ceiling, crown molds, new carpeting, marble or stone in front of the café countertops themselves for the high-traffic areas. And then these small little café tables for people to sit and enjoy time with each other. And then obviously, the elevator here. And the idea with the rendering here is to show that this is a space that is going to be very interesting to, when you're reaching out to new people to try to grow the church congregation, that 30 to 35 age group with young children and toddlers. And we want to, we want to have that mood, that everything is fresh and new and exciting. That's what we're trying to create in this area here.
The other uses for this space would be to be home for a welcome center for our visitors and the like. It's kind of a little bit disjointed right now. So it could be a center focus for inviting folks to get to know a little bit more about the church, introduction to it, an informal meeting space. It's a place of identity as well. So there's a lot of different things that can come up out of this. I know that when Jim Cowart was working on the design for Harvest, that this is one of the things that they wanted to include. And I think it's been a great asset for their church. So I know that's a little bit, a little bit out there, but to tell you the truth, it's not, not outside the normative. It is something that has been included with a lot of church designs, as Barry has said in Georgia.
It has become one of the most popular things that we're requested to design in the liturgical projects now.
Okay? So I said as before, is that one of the aspects of the church is, how do we promote the Kingdom of God? To let people know that the Kingdom of God is here and soon to come. One of the, one of the things that we're very, very pleased to have is Arca de Fuego. And it will be quite an addition for our Hispanic congregation here as well. And I wanted to give you an update on what's happening there. We have someone who is very generously, will match up to a certain amount for the new wiring for Arca de Fuego. And we're within just a very, a very small amount of money of being able to start that project. And part of the Capitol Campaign here will be to do a little remodeling in there as well as being part of this campus as well. It's not just for the Hispanic congregation, but it's for all of our use as well. So I'm pretty excited by that. The way that's being done is by the car washes there and the sale of some pretty excellent food. But as I say, in Arca de Fuego, as well as America's First United Methodist Church, the church is the people. And that's what we're building into this Capitol Campaign. So once again, the ministries of the church are how do you, how do you bring people in to have a relation with ship, with Jesus Christ our Lord? And these are just a couple of things that we're involved with. Of course, Samaritan's Purse, ministry in Cuba. We have a homeless shelter ministry there. I think, if I'm not mistaken, maybe someone can help me, that we've started seven churches in Cuba. Is that correct? Okay, I think that number is correct. So that's pretty cool. All right. Nuts and bolts things. We want you to see what we have now and what we envision, what we see to go from where we are now to the future. First of all, is the southern side of the sanctuary. You know it very well. We've got this natural opening, or this opening that's been created. And all of you know that when it gets cold, there's a very cold wind that blows in there. And when it rains, you get wet, okay? There is a pernicious drainage problem throughout the campus. But in pinch points like this, is that a good word? That when we come in, we get to experience a little bit of the weather. And it's been a little bit awkward for wedding parties and the like. So Barry has drawn up a solution to this problem. And Barry, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah. This, what we've done here is create a pedemated gable that will cover those open roof areas that are, that kind of notch that's above the handicap ramp now, where you have the rain that comes down in that little corner of the building. So what we've tried to do here is emulate the cornice details and have everything blend into this existing, this is the colonnade here. And you can see that the accessibility is maintained, and we have the same coloration. This is all cementus and PVC materials, so there's nothing wood that's going to rot. So we have everything impervious to the weather, tying into our natural roof lines back into this mid-rail cornice. So it gives us a really attractive element, and it's going to be repeated in another spot on the rear of the church, this kind of pediment motif. So it kind of blends in with the color and the architecture of the church, but it gives us that functionality to protect that accessibility and that handicap spacing.
Then in the back of the church, you know that there is, we've used that area, I guess historically, for parking and some storage and all sorts of other things. But there is some traffic flow issues and the like, and we have some external storage problems as well and the existing port cochere there. So Barry has come up with a solution to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing to the eye and also help create a space for the bye-bye buggies and possibly a golf cart in the future and just some of the things that sit out. Now, I'm going to reverse that in just a moment. But for right now, this is what Barry envisions.
So what we'll do is, again, repeat that gable motif on the other end of the building here and create the port of cochere for the drop-off for the seniors and this handicap accessibility. We're going to redo that roof structure where we have the air conditioning condensers, where all that rain comes through and create a much nicer exterior loggia hallway. And then we're going to have a PVC fence here. This is where the buggies that we mentioned earlier... This is where the buggies that we mentioned earlier from the Bright Beginnings, the hallway out here, they'll be hidden out here behind this fence with these natural, these nice gates and the hardware. We're going to get rid of all that kind of tacky, forgive the term, structure under there, that all the metal posts and the gutters and all of that. We'll have a built-in gutter system and nice PVC columns, load-bearing fiberglass columns here, so that creates a much more pleasing space aesthetically and gives us the functionality that we need there.
So if you turn around, you can see, heading back toward the social hall, in the far area of this particular slide, is right behind that brick wall is the, some of the air conditioning units, and then that whole area which will be redone, and this is what Barry envisions for that.
So again, we've got the nice canopy cornice that ties in with the other cornice. We're going to cover the gap and get the roof to function properly up there, where there's now this kind of big air gap, about a foot and a half back there, and the PVC fence with the accessibility to the air conditioning condenser units, some storage area back here, but everything ends up looking really nice, and it blends in nicely and gets rid of that eyesore in the back of the church building there.
And I can't say it enough that the reason we're doing all of this is to honor and glorify God, but to enhance the ministries that we already have in the church itself, and it is most certainly an investment for the future, and all of those things that you can see in that particular inset there and beyond, and beyond. All right, this is probably the slide that everyone wants to see the most. Let's talk a little bit about this. A little bit of an eye chart, we apologize, but we wanted to put all this on one slide. The numbers that you have before you here, I can refer you to Sambo and some other folks that could talk about, a little bit more about the mechanics of this, but we believe that the first and second floor renovations and the children's classrooms will be about $300,000 to accomplish. There's a three-stop commercial-grade elevator. It is a hydraulic system that will involve doing a little digging in the basement, but it will be a high-speed, high-speed, right, I guess? I guess you can say that? And that will be $165,000 is our estimate. We believe that the coffee café and service pantry area will be $47,000. And just as you would expect in a hundred-year-old building, you would have some pretty, possibility of some pretty extensive electrical wiring and the like. This has an interesting ground system in it, let's put it that way. And so to bring all this up to code, mechanically and electrically, and do some upgrades with lighting, is $65,000. We believe that there's an area for a new roof and a support deck in the existing basement and alley will be $32,000. We, of course, will probably need some furniture, fixtures, cabinetry, and other pertinences, and we believe that will be $85,000. One of the things I want to mention to you right off the bat is your capital campaign committee and the trustees decided to cut about $350,000 out of this. I think our original number was about $1.2 million, but we believe that $350,000 wasn't needed at this particular time, okay? And so we backed it off to the things that we thought were absolutely essential. And one of the things that we wanted to do is we've got this interesting traffic problem here in America's First, and we think that we can fix that with some resurfacing and painting of the parking area itself for $35,000. There's, of course, permits and engineering fees, all the things you get to involve with in the state and local government, and that's $15,500. The renovation of our foundry, we believe it's $50,000. Arca de Fuego, the renovation of the children's rooms, that'll probably be the second floor in that area or a part of it, will be $35,000. And then, of course, how many of you watch the home renovation shows? Okay, everybody does, right? So the worst thing that can happen to you is for Chip or Joanna Gaines to call you, and they say, "Well, we have opened up the siding of your home, and we found a possum" or something, you know? "And he has eaten his way through," or whatever the damage is, and then they'll say, "How much is it going to cost to bring it up to code or repair?" And it's outside of what we thought. So there's always contingencies, and I know you know that, and we believe that a conservative amount is $120,000 for overruns and contingencies. The total is $949,500, and that's the number that we're going to be going for in a capital campaign. And we'll return to that, I'm sure, in just a little bit. So what's our plan to move forward? How do you raise $949,500? Well, you do it the same way that Cordial did, at 2.3 million. It can be done. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, and that's what we're going to try to do, is faithfully look at this as an investment in where we think God is leading us. And so we have this schedule, and Sam, you want to come up and talk a little bit? Where's Sam? Okay, Sam, you want to come up and talk about our campaign manager, our campaign folks, and just talk a little bit about that?
Jerry mentioned Resource Ministry Partners out of Birmingham, and the way we found out about them was through Cordial. David Thompson's church over in Cordial, as Jerry said, raised over $2 million using these people. So we asked them to come down here. The gentleman's name that came is Dr. Bill Crosby, and he talked to us, and we liked what he had to say, but I was a little bit skeptical of just, you know, putting all the eggs in one basket. So I actually called a friend of mine, Wes Wicker, who's in the fundraising business in Atlanta, and talked to him about it, about, you know, how you, what you would do about going about, you know, setting up an RFP for this, and about how much the fees would be for somebody like his organization to do it. Now, these folks specialize in churches. Wes's organization does a lot more than that, and he, in talking with him, he said, you know, their fee would be somewhere around $100,000, and that would be kind of standard in their industry. When we sent out the RFP, these folks' fee was $36,900, a little bit less than $100. I agree with that. Anyway, to tell you a little bit about them, they only do Methodist churches. They are a nonprofit organization. They are actually part of the North Alabama Conference of the United Methodist Church. Bill Crosby has 30 years of pastoral experience, and you wonder, well, how can he do this and do that? He's still doing it. He still preaches every Sunday, but he does this during the week. And to tell you a little bit about their organization, they were founded in 1999. They worked with over 175 churches, mostly in the southeastern United States. As I said, they're nonprofit, and that's one of the reasons their fee is so much less than anybody else's. Bill Crosby has been down here numerous times. We've been on phone calls numerous times. He's been very involved in this. What they will do is, we're going to begin with a feasibility study, just to find out what we can raise, and what they do.
You want?
Okay, you go ahead with that.
Okay. And so what RMP will do, and once again, this is an eye chart, I apologize, but you have it before you, what they're going to do is, it's very quickly now, is tonight, we're going to announce that there's going to be a mailing of a survey to all of you. And the feasibility study survey, and basically what that is, is going to have some basic demographic information for you. We're going to ask you about how you participate in the life of the church and the like, and then we're going to ask you also if you would be willing to pledge to this effort. If not, you can give us reasons why and the like, and we welcome all of the comments. And so we anticipate by next week, July the 25th, that we're going to mail out the surveys and also establish a link for you via church-wide mail about the way that you can do this online. We're going to have a series of interviews on the July the 30th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and there are folks, don't be surprised if you're asked to come, and we're going to take a block of time, and once again, Bill Crosby and his team are going to do the interviews. We're not. We're going to step back from that. I'm not going to be involved with it, and no member of the staff, building committee, trustees, it's going to be what they do for us. And then, as we see there, the next day is 9:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We'll have another series of interviews with some different folks. July 31st is really the culmination for the sermons, or for the surveys themselves, and we're going to ask maybe 12 or 20 of you that have not participated in the survey already to come and be directed, or to listen, have, tell us, the campaign folks, we're going to go through every question, or he's going to go through every question on that survey, and when we get to the point where we really need some more information and in-depth, instead of looking at paper, you have someone to relate to about some of your concerns or whatever you might have, and that's what they're going to do in the focus group. It'll probably be about an hour, I would think. August 1st, we'll continue the interview series, 9:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're going to get a broad view of the, of all of you in those interviews. By August 15th, we hope that all the surveys return, and they're going to be compiled by RMP. There'll be a report back to us on August the 29th. This is going to be important, because this will tell us a couple of things. Are we financially able to do this process, this program? And what money we can raise? And then we'll talk about strategies for other methods that Sam can talk to you about if you have a question about that. And then the last one, I talked to Buddy Cooper about this on Thursday, that there is also a requirement for us to go with our capital campaign to the district, it used to be the District Board of Missions and the like, but now it's the Board of Trustees, with our idea. However, Buddy says that there is a thumb rule that says if your capital campaign is 10% or less of the total value of your campus, then that is waived, okay? So that to be determined will be determined at the moment the feasibility study comes back. You can expect also a purpose statement to go into the mail at that time. That purpose statement will give you a little bit more of a summary of what we propose and what we'd like to do in a narrative form, and you'll see that very quickly. You'll see a cover lever, a cover letter under my signature, and you can expect that probably within the next 10 days or so, okay? One of my very favorite passages from Nehemiah, the second chapter, you know Nehemiah was so grieved that he cried over the news that his beloved Jerusalem was now falling apart. And so he went before, as the cupbearer, to the Persian and said, "May I go back to Jerusalem to rebuild the walls." And he gave them permission and all sorts of resources, and he went back, and you know the story. But if you look at the second chapter, he said, "I told them that the hand of my God had been gracious upon me, also us, and also the words of the king had spoken to me. Then all of them said, 'Let's start building.'" So they committed themselves to the common good.
I'm going to take about three or four minutes, Frank, so y'all bear with me. I want to tell you a quick story. When Bobby and I first came here in 1967, March of 1967, I was just a little boy, and I had a child bride, that's been 50 years ago, but anyway, we sat right over here where we normally sit, and when we first walked in, I remember, y'all look up at the ceiling. I mean, if that isn't a wow, ooh, and ah, I don't know what you call it, but just look around at this facility. Incredible, absolutely incredible facility. The funny part of this story, it wasn't too funny to start with, and some of y'all will know it, because I've told the story before, Frank and Bill, but I was asked, we sat down over there, this gentleman walked up to me and said, I think he said, "Boy, you sitting in my place." I said, "Sir." He said, "You sitting in my place." I said, "Okay." So I got up and moved, and that was, of course, Sunday. The next day, John Roberts, many of y'all will remember John Roberts, district manager of Georgia Power at the time, I told him about it, I said, "We're not going back to Methodist Church. That guy was rude." He said, "Well, you just have to know him." And I'm not going to tell y'all who it was, but I bet most of you can guess who it was. But anyway, I came to know and love that man for many years later. And the next week, though, to finish that little quick story, I met the greatest man that I've ever known, Gene Wheeler's daddy, Roy Parker. He said, "Come back. I'm going to show you where Christ is in that church." And we did, and we've never, ever regretted coming to this church. This is where we raised our three children. We love this church. You wouldn't be here tonight if y'all didn't love this church. I know you wouldn't. We've got opportunities here, yes. Is it going to be perfect when we get through? Nope. But we're going to strive for perfection. We're going to do it the way God wants us to do it, and we've already started that way. In closing, I want to read y'all a quick little story. Brother Bill, you probably know this by heart, but it's very special to me when I read it. It's by Reverend Peter Spillman Rabel. "We build on foundations we did not lay. We warm ourselves by fires we did not light. We sit in the shade of trees we did not plant. We drink from wells we did not dig. We profit from persons we did not know. We are ever bound in community; may it always be so. This is as it should be. Together, we are more than any one person could be. Together, we can build across the generations. Together, we can renew our hope and faith in the life that is yet to unfold. Together, we can heed the call to a ministry of care and justice. We are ever bound in community; may it always be so." Ladies and gentlemen, I hope that we can all join hands in this great journey that we're about to begin, and take this journey together, one step at the time. We can do it.
Yes, we can.
I'm excited about it. I hope you'll join me in your excitement, and let's get it done. Thank you.
I want to thank you for coming tonight. A lot of things going on in your summer schedules, but you've set this aside to catch a vision. Let's stand for our benediction tonight. If you would, reach out and take somebody's hand. I asked this question, and I think the second week I was here, and I shocked a lot of people that didn't understand what I was saying. Do you want to start a new church?
Yeah.
You just did. You just did. My beloved, may the power and the peace and the presence of God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit live and abide in your hearts now and forevermore. Amen.